All right, I would like to call the order, the meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board, Independent School District 13 on Tuesday, May 26th. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Excuse me. All right, Molly, if you wouldn't mind, please, the roll call.
Severson.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
The Samurai.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Lewis, I, here, sorry.
I'll do, I guess, some sort of recognition that you're there. All right, our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner.
Say, Natty.
Yep.
I'm here too.
Yes, oh, yes, sorry, Kathley. If we could go have that noted in the roll call, thank you, Don.
I'm so sorry.
Is also here. We'll, we'll call it jitters, we'll call it jitters. And I will, as long as I've had a pause here, I'm gonna read a short statement about our meeting tonight. It says, "Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay, stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 and coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D .021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. The chair, the school board chair wishing, school board member wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair, or Laura in your case, jump in, so we know you're there. The chair will determine the order in which board members wish to speak, wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible." All right, we will move on to our mission statement. It says, "We're creating opportunity, worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation." I'd like to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we, we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
John, second?
Second.
Is that Lorian?
Lorian.
In the box there, thanks. All right, any discussion on the agenda? All right, hearing done, let's go to a roll call vote, please, Molly.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll go on to this week's announcements on May 28th. This week, on Thursday, is our last day of regular school, our last day of school for students. June 9th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there will be a regular school board meeting in the community room. On June 16th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there will be a school board work session in the community room. And on June 23rd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there will be another regular school board meeting in the community room, and those are all pending. The location is, of course, pending our ability to meet face-to-face. Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair, there's no cor, and board members, there's no correspondence this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The school board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone down there this week?
Madam Chair, there's no one present in the, in the boardroom at this time.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on then. I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report and the February and March treasurer reports. Can I have a motion to carry that forward?
We'll move.
John, second?
Second. Molly.
Molly, any discussion? All right, hearing done, let's do another roll call vote.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to, one of my favorite things to do is to read the acknowledgements of contributions, so it's a fun thing. This is a resolution, as I recall, correct? And so, I could use a motion to carry this forward, and then I'll read it. Or should I, I read it and then we do the motion? Or read it and then we do the motion?
I think you do the motion first.
Do the motion, okay. All right, can I get a motion to move this forward, please?
Emoved.
Lorian.
Okay, Molly, I got Molly on the motion on the second?
Second.
Lorian.
Lorian.
Thank you. All right. Acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, request donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefits of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $276,880. The detailed background includes monetary donations. A donation of $100 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Linda Armund, Armold, for emergency feeding. A donation of $100 was made to the Columbia Heights Public School by Julie Armold for emergency feeding. A donation of $1,100 was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club for yard signs for seniors. The following donations were made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Joy Balaillis, $50. Jean Richards, $100. Janet Vaughn, $100. Renee Janice Johnson, $1,000. Muskie Company Foundation, $500. Cott Family Foundation, $1,750. The Freedom Reliance Club, $3,000. A donation and the value in kind is a donation of a biodigester system was made to North Park Elementary by Waste to Energy Canada. Estimated value of $269,080. For a total fiscal year 2019, 2020, monetary contributions to date of $4,760,000, Can, that's, we've got the motion, we saw that motion already. Any discussion on this resolution? Hala.
Just wanna say it's definitely appreciated.
Yes. Agreed. Any other discussion? All right, well, thank you again, just echoing Hala's words, it's incredibly fun to read these out loud, and to hear of all the generosity, nearly a half a million dollars in gifts given in this year is quite an amazing thing, and when we're working with such a tight budget, so we appreciate all the gifts. Any other discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
The Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to discussion reports and information items. We'll start with reports from members of the board. Let's go with Hala.
I have had conversations with community members and parents.
Thank you. Let's move on to John.
Same, lots of parents and community members.
All right, thank you. Lorian.
Yeah, I attended the work session last week, John was there too, for the tour of the North Park construction progress and the performing arts spaces in the high school. Have also had conversations with members of the community and was at the chair meeting prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Laura.
Well, I also attended the work session last week and was very grateful to have a tour of all of the, all of the various projects that we have going on in the schools, so it's really good to see the progress there. Really excited to see the kids coming back in the fall, to see all these new, new things that the taxpayers have absolutely blessed the, the district with, and I, I really, it's really amazing the, the, the amount of good, of good facilities that we're, we're gonna have with the bathroom remodels and the new stage performance areas that the public will also be able to participate with, but it's really gonna be great for the kids, and I'm really grateful that we actually got to do an onsite tour instead of a virtual tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly.
Thank you, I've had some conversations with community members, parents, and also Superintendent Kelly, thank you.
And I think, like everyone, I've had a lot of conversations with community members, parents. I was also able to go to the optional work session last week, and tour the stuff, and I think, just like Laura said, and Superintendent Kelly kept saying along the way, now if we could only just see kids in it. Obviously, that's not possible right now, but it will be very exciting to have the kids back in it and to really celebrate it with the taxpayers who have given so generously for it. I have the chair meeting as well. Superintendent Kelly, do you, Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report for us?
Madam Chair and members, I do. I attended Minnesota School Boards Association WebEx on graduation ceremonies and possible liabilities. I've had multiple pandemic updates from the Commissioner of Education and Commissioner of Health regarding guidance on graduation and summer programming. I attended a superintendent's licensure panel for an employee, and the employee successfully received the license, so congratulations. Met with the Columbia Heights City Manager, Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, the Fire Chief regarding graduation plans. Also had an in-person meeting with two board members and the Chiefs, and Brian Henneken's in, in this room regarding graduation planning. Met with the school district attorney and our insurance risk manager and workers' comp regarding graduation liabilities. And then was in contact with multiple school board members about specific issues and concerns. I attended the school board chair meeting prior to this one, and I had a blast at last week's facilities tour with the school board members there. Thank you for your time.
You're muted, Natty.
I just see that, thankfully it gives you that little blip that reminds you you're talking to yourself, which I actually frankly do a lot, as you can imagine. Let's see, now a fun part, we're gonna move on to the Employee of the Year. Welcome, Lindsay Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's always an honor to get to present the Employee of the Year each year in front of the school board, and especially this year with the finishing out a little bit different. So this year for the 2019, 2020 Employee of the Year, it's Matthew Miller. Most of you know as the Assistant Principal at the high school. He's also served as Activities Director and as the Dean of Students, so he's held many positions. It's not his first honor with the district, he was the 2008 Alumni of Distinction. And we also have the Congressional Plaque up front, celebrating some of his work too. So before Mr. Miller speaks, I always like to have the person who nominated him, who's Carrie Trinanan, our Academic Specialist, say a few words.
Good evening, members of the board. When I first started at Columbia Heights Public Schools, one of the first people I remember meeting was Matt Miller, then Athletic Director. The thing that made Matt stick out to me was the pride for Columbia Heights that beamed from him. It was if he literally bleeds blue and gold. The more and more I have worked with Matt, the more and more I truly believe he bleeds blue and gold. The reasons for which I think he should be Staff Member of the Year can be tied to our core values. Community. His interest in helping people is sincere, and it allows him to meaningfully connect with everyone that he works with. Matt's positive and unique personality allows him to make connections with staff and students to ensure they feel like they truly belong at Columbia Heights. Excellence. As Assistant Principal, Matt's strong, Matt's strong work ethic sets the standard for staff and students. Collaboration. Matt is an integral member of a variety of committees and teams that work to ensure our students receive a top-notch education. Matt recently worked with district staff, high school admin, and high school teachers to coordinate the implementation of the pre-AP curriculum to ninth grade students. This raises the level of rigor for our students and ensures they are ready to take college-level classes. Matt has also worked with the Avid team to support all classes and focus note-taking. Again, this helps our students as they progress on their journey of being college and career-ready. Integrity. Matt is the type of person who has character of high integrity. Matt does things the right way and makes sure others follow suit. Respect. Assistant Principals wear numerous hats, often overseeing various components of campus life. That includes interacting with students, meeting with parents, communicating with school districts and community organizations, ensuring that the school remains in compliance with legal responsibilities. Because of his tireless work ethic and meaningful connections, he is well-liked and respected by all. Courage. Matt received the Above and Beyond Citizens Award in 2008 for his role in rescuing eight victims during the collapse of the 35W Bridge. Because of this, I am certain that Matt would face any challenge with the same courage. Innovation. Matt is leading the charge of the implementation of the pre-AP programming. This ensures all ninth grade students have access to curriculum that will allow them to be college and career-ready. And these are reasons I believe Matt deserves to be Employee of the Year.
Now it's time for me to speak. All right, Carrie, you're gonna make me cry. That was awesome, thank you for that. I appreciate the kind words. So, yeah. So I wanna, I, I, I wanna first, thanks, thank you Carrie for nominating me. Thank you, your speech is much better than mine, that, much better than mine, mine's gonna be here. Hi Moses. But I'm honored to receive this award. Moses. And when, when I first found out that I was gonna get this award, I was speechless. Honestly, I was stunned. And what came to my mind was, man, there's so many other people that I work with that deserve this award. Not me, not, I mean, I'm, I wear, Carrie said, I wear a lot of hats as Assistant Principal, but there are plenty of people that work with me or under me that are in the shadows that make, that make the bus move forward. So that was my first initial thought when, when I was told I got this award, so I am not a man for many words, so I'm gonna keep this short, but I, I am thankful. I'm truly thankful that I have the opportunity to, to, to serve the community in Columbia Heights, which I was raised in, and serve the staff here, and serve the students. I truly have joy waking up in the morning, driving back to the, I don't live far from the community, driving into the community and serving at all capacities. I truly believe that every student can be successful. When you put the right people in place on the bus, all staff, all cooking staff, all custodian staff, all teachers, all coaches, we, we truly can work as a team to reach every student. Now, each day looks, looks different for me, but if we're collaborating, which I, I love at Columbia Heights, we collaborate very well with district office, with administration. We get teachers to, to get on the same page, and we're working together, and we grind it out, because it, sometimes it's not easy. Sometimes we face challenges at Columbia Heights, and it's, and it's tough. And we go home stressed, but the, the kids make it worth it coming back the next day. So I'm rambling a little bit, but I, I truly believe it is about relationships, creating an environment where kids belong, where they, they can walk through the front door, and they feel like you care about them, and that's how you make change. So, thank you, thank you all. If, if I leave without thanking my wife, she's gonna, she's gonna let me have it. So, I need to thank my wife for all her support. I started off as a dean at Columbia Heights, then I moved into the Activities Director role, and now as an Assistant Principal, so she, she's backed me 100%. And she's a rock star with my kids, especially this wild one, Moses. But I, I need to thank her also for supporting me and loving me, because there are some days where I come home and I'm, I'm beat, and you all probably don't believe it, but I can be unkind sometimes, so she has patience for me. So I, I need to thank Alyssa Joy for being in my corner. So, thank you all very much. I am truly honored, and I am grateful to work with you all on the screen and the community and, and our kids. I love our kids, that's what wakes me up in the morning and gives me joy, so thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Matt, we're so proud of you, and I think a lot of us get to see that on a daily basis. Lindsay, I didn't wanna rain on your parade, was there anything else in your presentation? It's kind of hard to know. We're good, okay. Well, I think this is a great time for board members to comment. Anybody have any, anything to say to Matt? John, see that hand?
Big surprise, John has something to say. Matthew, Carrie did a phenomenal job painting a perfect picture of who you are and what you do in our community and in the district. The bleeding blue and gold, without a doubt, so thank you very much. You're so darn humble. Another reason that I think you're an excellent choice for Employee of the Year, so heartfelt congratulations to you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lorian. Molly, you're next.
Yeah, just wanna echo what, what John said, and I, Matt, when I think of you, I, I honestly think of somebody who I aspire to be like, in terms of your patience and motivation and outgoing and care for our kids. You're an inspiration to me as well, and I think we're very lucky to have you. And Carrie, thank you for taking the time to write that nomination. You know, you're a special person, Matt, with a very special place in, in our district, so thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Lorian.
Natty, is it okay if I go ahead?
Yes, yeah, I don't know, my internet's kind of chopping up, I thought I said that out loud, but.
Okay, we're good. Yes, I hate repeating people, but Lorian and John, exactly what they said. Carrie, first of all, thank you, that was a, a really nice letter. Matt, it's so well-deserved, the relationships you have with your peers, the, the people that you work alongside of, and also with your students. I just, I commend you day in, day out, to come back and serve the way that you do. I only wish that we could do this little, you know, ceremony in the, in the community room where you belong with your family, because I know your family is always alongside of you. So tell Alyssa thank you from us all as well, we appreciate all of what you do. Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Hala. Hey Matt, I just wanna say congratulations, thank you for everything you've done and for everything you continue to do. It really, really makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Hala.
I think Laura's unmuting there, so go ahead, Laura.
Okay, just waiting for my time to say congratulations, and thank you so much for being part of, a part of the district. I'm very, very grateful that, that you decided to come back home. The kids absolutely adore you, I know my kids have, so, and I, I've seen on numerous occasions at various events, events, the, how you manage to juggle so many different things and keep track of everything that's going on. It's extremely impressive, and I really do also wish that I could congratulate you in person. But we'll see you next year, and we'll do a high five or a, an elbow bump to say congratulations and good to see you back. Thanks.
Thanks.
Elbow bumps are gonna be the new thing, right? I suppose, moving on, no more handshaking or whatever. I'm sure Lindsay will have some sort of certificate for you coming, coming in your box at some point in the future, whenever that is. And again, Matt, thanks so much for all you've done, and, and thank you Carrie for the nomination, and for Lindsay and the administration team for offering a chance to celebrate some of the, a representative of, of all of the great work our whole staff team is doing, so we appreciate that. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, thank you all, I appreciate you all.
All right. And Matt, you're, you're, well, you're able to ditch out so, so long as supervisor says it's okay, so.
You're saying I don't, I don't have to stay for the whole meeting?
Not much needed to be here, I think, who is suited, I mean, is Dan here?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, Matt, I'm gonna put this guy to bed, so thank you all again. Have a great night.
All right. Bye, Moses. I would like to welcome up Tara and her team, and Tara, I'll leave it to you to introduce them.
Thank you, Chair Severson. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to share about EverFi, which is a financial online literacy course, which is made possible by Northeast Bank. So tonight we have three representatives from Northeast Bank. We have Sue, Michael, and Andrea, who I'll introduce later on again, and they'll have a couple words to say at the end. Our mission in Columbia Heights of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And really focusing in on our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, and innovation tonight. This is an informal presentation, so there'll be no governance question to follow. EverFi is used at the high school in our business courses, especially in our personal money management course. And this is taught by Jennifer Carroll, she wasn't able to make it tonight due to family obligations, but she's been teaching this for quite a few years. And there are currently four sections this school year and 108 students that were part of the course. And here you can see the different units of study, as well as the several methods of learning, which includes EverFi interactive modules, which we'll take a little tour of tonight. EverFi is an online financial education course, and Northeast Bank supports Columbia Heights High School with access to this course through their donation. And here's what the home screen looks like as the students log in. So you'll notice Columbia Heights, the logo's in the corner, as well as Northeast Bank, to our financial literacy course. And these are the different modules that students are able to partake in during the course. This has especially been important during this online learning time, that our students have this module and online access. And it begins with banking basics, so you can see here some of the different topics that they cover, including how to manage checking and savings account, what is the impact of interest, what does that look like? A lot of those lifelong learning skills that are very important for our students to learn prior to leaving high school. Income and employment, they're able to look at how do you analyze that paycheck? What does it mean to be net pay? They actually practice filling out a W-4, so they're able to understand that before they leave. Budgeting, they understand what are prioritizing needs and wants. And what about those unexpected expenses? So what if your phone breaks, how do you make sure you budget for that in terms of looking at your money? And here they do a lot of activities and games, as well as watching. And here they do a lot of activities and games, as well as watching videos. Consumer skills, they learn about when you're purchasing online, what do you look for? Some of the safety aspects, as well as being careful with your money and inserting the different payment methods. They also have the opportunity to learn about the difference between renting and owning. For credit and debt, they're able to look at what is that credit score and what does it mean? And how does that affect loans or different things in the future? I think this is especially important as our students go off to college and they start managing their own money, and really understanding that their credit score makes a difference from right out of high school into college. And this is an important one for our students, we're looking at higher education. They're able to look at the different institutions that they are interested in, talk about scholarships, and practice filling out that FASAs. So, I know we do that a lot at our high school in different avenues, but this is an important one where they're able to test out of it or practice it, and have an opportunity to get feedback from their teacher. Insurance, I think this was a big one for all of us as we left college and understanding, what does it mean to get your own health insurance? What does it mean to have a premium? When you buy a car, you need insurance, what does that mean? So, understanding all the different costs that associate with that. And so, when Jennifer Carroll asked her students, what did you think about EverFi? And how does it help you learn? Here are some of the comments that they shared, and the major theme through all of it was that it really helped them for the real world. They saw it applicable to what they need to know, it was very interactive and fun. So, it made it into a game, made it into videos and things that they found important, as well as informational. And here are a couple of pictures that we're taking while the kids were still at school, so pre-COVID, as they were on their devices, and I know that they're still on their devices at home using the same program. And this is really made possible through the partnership with Northeast Bank and their donation. So, we really wanted to take tonight to thank them, to thank them for supporting our students with this course and the many other things that they do for Columbia Heights students. So, tonight we have on Sue, Michael, and Andrea, and I'm going to pass it over to them to share a little to Columbia Heights about their donation.
This is Mike Scholl, Sue, are you on? You were going to take the lead, otherwise I'd be happy to. Are you, is Sue Cecilia on? Okay, well, I guess I just really wanted to thank you. It's an honor for us to be partnering with the district. We're just so very proud, even tonight, seeing the core values and hearing kind of the moving story about Matt, and you know, our partnership goes way back and everything that Superintendent Kelly's done, and you know, John Lark and Chris, we're just honored to be partnering. So, it's great to hear the thank you, but again, it's really our honor. We love partnering, and this is great to see this feedback too. It's good to see and hear that the students are enjoying it and learning. And so, and it's so timely right now, having this online module to reach the students, and I'm just so thrilled that the district is partnering with us on it, so. I don't know, Andrea, if you have anything to add? Well, I might be flying solo, can I?
Oh, well, thank you so much. Oh, go ahead, yes, go ahead, thank you.
I just became unmuted, I apologize. No, I echo Mike's comments, and just truly appreciate the partnership that we have with the district. I enjoy so much my time co-chairing the finance community with Brian Hennickins, and just truly carrying on to our bank's legacy of community giving, and also my late boss Larry Petrak as well. He was huge in the Columbia Heights community for almost 50 years, and really a strong supporter of the district. So, it's just really great to continue that legacy in his name as well, and just continue to build on our partnership. So, thank you so much.
And this is Sue, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
And I just got unmuted as well, but the only thing that I want to add is we're incredibly proud of this partnership with the Columbia Heights School District. And like Matt, I might not bleed blue and gold quite like he does, but I'm an incredibly proud Columbia Heights grad as well. So, it's really fun to be working with the school district, thank you.
We appreciate all of you being here, oh, sorry Tara.
Nope, you're good, that was the end of it, I'll pass it on to you.
All right, awesome, and we really appreciate all of you being here with us tonight, and like the slide said, we're thankful for all of your contributions and partnership in so many different ways with the community, so thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or thoughts? Scanning for hands raised. Lorian.
Yeah, just real quick, again, I wanted to just say thank you to Northeast Bank and for the folks that were here. Money management and financial matters are so important for our students to be independent once they graduate, and to have just a healthy understanding of financial management is so critical. So, thank you for your partnership and your donation to really help in that end of our curriculum.
John.
Same or similar as Lorian, Mike, Sue, and Andrea, you guys have been great partners with the district and the community for a long time. And Mike, as always, you're humble about the role that you're playing, but as Lorian said, extremely important that our students are given an opportunity to understand what it's going to be like when they hit the bricks after they graduate, so thank you very much.
Oh, Molly, there it is.
Thank you, I just want to add real quickly, you know, I think, thank you all from Northeast Bank. This is something that you hear about, a lot of other districts are oftentimes saying these classes should be offered. This is one of those classes, and so I just really appreciate the fact that our kids at Columbia Heights High School are able to take this. My son benefited from it and had great things to say about it as well, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you again Northeast State Bank and everybody who came to our meeting tonight. We appreciate your partnership and look forward to that continued partnership throughout the years to come. And you don't have to feel rude also if you are ready to leave the meeting. Nothing like a virtual school board meeting to have an exciting Tuesday night. But, we will be moving that on to another financial issue in the OPEB trust. Denise.
Good evening Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We have Merle Waters here tonight with us, he's from Wells Fargo, and he's an investment strategist. He's been in that role for 24 years of his 30 with Wells Fargo Bank, and he has worked with our account, our OPEB trust account since its inception in 2008. So, he also works with other metro districts, 12 other districts, mostly in the metro area. And he's going to do a PowerPoint for us tonight. Merle, I saw you on here earlier.
I am here, can you hear me, I assume?
Yep.
And is the presentation up fine as well?
Yes.
So, and before I begin, I think just given the events of the last three to three and a half months, four months, if you will, I thought it would be good to ask, just, we'll take a look at performance, how the portfolio is invested. I have some charts in the end if we want to look at that. And I'll stay very brief as well, but I just thought it would be helpful to ask, are there any specific questions or topics that you for sure want me to hit on? Anything that might be a little bit unique that anyone has in terms of questions? If not.
I'm scanning through the board members, I have the tile view and it's in presenter mode. So, if I'm missing your hand signal, why don't you just go ahead and unmute and talk? I don't think it looks like we have any specific questions, so, so thank you though.
Okay, we'll jump right in then, so, if, just a summary page, I think for those of you who may be new or those on that may not be familiar with the trust. The trust goes back to December of 2008, ironically, one of the last crisis period we actually went through. If you think about the financial crisis back in late 07 and 08, so, starting point in the financial crisis, December of 08, it's an irrevocable trust, very long-term focus, you'll see greater than 10 years there. Some of the information that might be a little bit dated there in terms of the fiscal year or the OPEB obligation, those types of things, but I just wanted to point out again that, mostly the timing of this, again, going back to December of 2008. And the information that you see here, so, again, the allocations that you see and performance that we'll include in this evening are as of April 30th. As of April 30th, if you look at the far right-hand column, can see the value of the trust just under $5 million. I did look through the close of trading on Friday, it was a bit above $5 million through Friday, and after today's strong gains, we're probably more like 5.1, maybe a little bit above 5.1 million. So, around $5 million in total value. The pie chart, that's titled target allocation, so the pie chart on the right-hand side, the targets that you see there, the 40% for fixed income, 40% for equities, et cetera, those targets were initially set at the inception of the trust, they've been adjusted some over time. But those all tie back to a document that's called an investment policy statement. So, there's a document that really provides me the rules of the road for how we manage the portfolio. There's some variance that we have, some ranges that we have, but generally speaking, we will tend to be very close to the targets that we have on the right-hand side. And in fact, if you look on the left-hand side, you can see the current allocation as of the end of April, all with the exception of what we call real assets, or think of real estate or commodities. And I should back up a bit, statute 356A, Minnesota statute 356A does govern how the trust can be invested, and it does allow for commodities and real estate, those types of investments as a diversifier. But at this point, we've chosen to underweight, if you will, that asset class. So, versus the 10% target, we're running about 5% in real estate or real assets. And that 5% underweight is actually being held in cash at this point in time, so in a money market fund. And that's just a function of the environment that we're in today, wanting to be a little bit more conservative. And the second thing, also having that cash set aside for the opportunity potentially of investing back in equities at some point in the future. But generally speaking, we are neutral to the targets. There's a box in the middle of this particular page that shows, that's labeled alternative investments. And again, that ties back to what's permissible with 356A, to again, to invest in investments other than stocks and bonds. And we have the very first one listed there, again, that's the real estate fund that we own. The other three are alternative, more true alternative types of funds, they're long, short, mutual funds, and they work very well in markets like this, a very broadly diversified portfolio. Again, about 5.1 million through the close of trading today in value. We always include, and it says prior 12 months in the title, but the last, I included clear back to January of 2019 here. There are always small adjustments occurring in the portfolio. These are some of the larger adjustments that we've made, and more recently in March of this year. We did reduce, or we did sell some real estate, like I mentioned, we're underweight. We raised some cash in March as well. We significantly reduced the allocations, when you think about the equity portion of the portfolio, we've significantly reduced our allocations to emerging markets and what we call international developed markets, so with developed markets, think Europe. So, we significantly reduced those categories, and instead have tended to overweight even more so US equities, and in particular, US large cap equities. So, some of those changes were made in March, others in April. So, quite a bit more activity, and then even some adjustments back in February. So, a more active environment, and that's just consistent with the type of economic conditions that we have at this point. Any questions so far? Take a look at performance next. Okay, actually, this particular page is just a quick summary here of incoming and outgoing cash flows. And so, those items in red in the middle, and there is a date error there, the last one should be 2019, not 2020. But those red numbers are all distributions from the trust, annual distributions that have been made. And oftentimes, it's more meaningful than when we get to the performance page and we talk about percentage returns. It's often more meaningful really to put this in dollar terms, and so at the very bottom, the gray highlighted box, you'll see actual net increase in market value there, a little over $2.7 million. And again, if you think about the original funding, if you go to the very top of this particular page, the funding of the trust there, about 4.5 million. Okay, now for performance, and this again is through the end of April. And I'm going to look at the year-to-date column, because that is our time right now with the crisis that we're going through at the moment. So, the year-to-date column at the very bottom, where you'll see a row that says total portfolio, net of fees, and a negative 5.21. So, through the end of April, for the total portfolio, so the combination of the fixed income, equities, the real estate investments, the trust in total down about 5.2%. The estimate for May is a return of somewhere around 1%, so year-to-date, we're getting close to being down about 4%. And I think it's helpful to think about the components now, because up until now, really, that large portion that's in fixed income has been a bit of a drag actually on performance. That's the way we would define that, I guess, is holding back returns, because the equity market has been so good until recently. And we had that 40% in fixed income in it, you know, it did its thing, but the returns were very modest. But you can see now on a year-to-date basis, the fixed income return there, that very top number is the actual portfolio return, so 3.43%. If you think about prior years versus equities, that's certainly not a big number, but in an environment like we've had this year, 3.43% positive. And again, that's about 40% of the portfolio, very high-quality fixed income. Then when we look at equities, and again, through the end of April, down just about 12%, right at 12%. All of the numbers that you see below the first row are different indices or different ways to measure the market, whether that be domestic or international or within the domestic market, if it's large companies versus small. And as you work your way down towards the middle of that, you'll see some pretty big negatives in there. A negative 21, a negative 17. The best area to be, again, has been US large cap, and again, that's where we are overweight. And then dropping below that, you'll see real assets, so the real estate investments, even though we've trimmed them back pretty substantially, down about 2% through April. And then finally, the long-short funds that I mentioned, down about nine. So, again, when you combine all of that together, and including the cash, the money market allocation that we have at this point in time, all of that together, again, through the end of May, should this week stay the way it is at this point, should be down around 4%, maybe just a little bit over 4%. So, we are thrilled to have had the bounce or the rally in the equity market that we've had off of the March 23rd low. Since that point in time, the market's back up 30% plus. But the math works pretty bad, when you go down 33 to 34%, you need to get into the 40% back to the upside to get even. So, we have a ways to go yet before we get back even for this year. But to think about what it felt like on March 23rd to be at this point with the portfolio down about 4% to 5%, we're very pleased with that. I'll just stop just for a moment, just on any questions on performance. Other than that, I did include maybe just two charts to spend just a moment on. And this particular chart or graph is graphing what we call volatility. There's a lot of, it's hard to read, I apologize for the size of print and everything. But this is a measure of fear or risk in the market and in equities specifically. So, if you look at the gray shaded section towards the middle, that was the financial crisis. So, that was late 2007, 2008, or early 2009. And what we call the fear index, or the volatility index spiked tremendously back then. And since then, we've had a relatively calm market, historically quite calm market. And then you see on the far right-hand side, then, the virus period here, the coronavirus period, and a very similar spike in fear or volatility. So, the month of March in particular, the markets were not functioning very well, enormous amount of fear. And of course, that's when you saw the Fed step in and basically backstop all fixed income investments in particular initially. And so, we've had a tremendous pullback or decline, if you will, in volatility back to much lower levels. So, very consistent with the market fear of the financial crisis. So very consistent with the, the market fear of the financial crisis. And then one last, just in the interest of time. You know, oftentimes, so going back to the adjustments that we've made in the portfolio, they have been generally meaningful, relatively meaningful. But at times, like in March, a common question is, why don't we get out? Why don't we get out for a while until it looks better or feels better or the, the economic conditions are better? And the blue bars in the middle of this particular page that are titled missing the best days in the market. And this goes back to March of 1990 and it includes every trading day in the 90s, clear through the 2000s, so three decades of trading. And this actually ends at the end of March. So a very ugly time in the market here. And what this is measuring on the far left-hand side, where you see the 6.73% is if you just remain fully invested the entire time, so through the tech bubble, through the financial crisis, through the, the virus issue that we're going through right now. If you stayed fully invested, didn't try to trade and time the market, your return was still 6.7% annualized on an annualized basis, so 6.7% a year. Just to the right of that, if you missed the 10 best days in the market over those 30 years, just the 10 best days in 30 years, you cut your return by about two and a half percentage points annually. So a significant decline. And so if you think of a portfolio that's worth $5 million, 2% a year on $5 million is, is a lot of money. And so our approach generally is within the guidelines that we have to stay fully invested, to make adjustments, but to stay fully invested because of the difficulty of timing, of timing the market. And just to make, to make note of that, in particular, in, in the period of March, 23rd of March was the, the current bottom of the market with the US market down about 33% in, in about five and a half weeks. The 24th of March, the US market, and I'm talking just big, the S and P 500, big companies. On the 24th of March alone, the US market was up just about 10% in one day. So again, if you on the Friday before that, that Tuesday, thought maybe you could, to time the market, get out, try and save some more downside, you missed 10% in one day. And again, we've rallied 30% plus since the 24th of March. So again, very, very difficult to time the market. And you can see the numbers as you shift to the side there. If you miss the 40 best days, your returns are flat over 30 years. So again, our, our approach is to stay fully invested, generally speaking. With that, I will end and offer up any questions, thoughts?
All right. Any questions? Again, we're in screen sharing mode, so I can't see all of your hands at one time. So if you have questions, I think it just chime in. I guess, given no one else does, I can be first or maybe last or both. To remain just, just sort of like solvent or useful to us, what do we need to average? Given what we're paying out annually, like what needs to be our average percentage return?
Yeah, typical, very good question. Tip, when we first set the, the trusts up and by trust, I mean, generally speaking, at the time back in 2008, 2009, when these were first being established, 5% generally speaking was a, would have, was a number that, that made these trusts work, if you will. So long-term, they would remain solvent, they could meet obligations. I think to some degree, I would probably defer a bit back to Denise on this in the sense that, that, and I can explain this, every couple of, every two years, the state requires an actuarial study, which basically looks at your, your current obligation, market value of the trust, factors that in. So the, the assumptions that the actuary uses has probably had more of an impact on, if you want to think of it in the sense of the solvency. Going back to that very first page, the, the last time we had a discussion on the, the obligation, it was a little north of $2 million. And so you have a market value of five at this point. That information is probably a bit stale at this point, but at this point, you know, I, I can't really give you an, an actual number that would be required because, because the, you're, you're very well funded, I guess.
Okay, that's, that, I think that's the heart of the question.
Yeah, well, well, answer to your question, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
Funding perspective, you're in very good shape.
Okay, great. Cause I saw we're averaging a little over 5% on the life since 20, 2008. So that seems good to me, but.
Yeah.
I also don't manage $5 million.
So looked so much better at the end of February. Arch, March was, with March was really hard on the port, all portfolios.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, given that, thank you so much for coming to our meeting and sharing with us. We appreciate it. Denise, did you have anything else to add?
No, it was good. Thanks, Meryl.
All right, if you guys wouldn't mind turning off that screen sharing, that would be excellent.
Absolutely.
We will move on to adult basic education with Kristin Stunkel and team.
There we go. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly and my grandfather clock in the background, sorry about that. Okay, it's going to chime.
These are the great things, Kristin, these are the great things about having these, so.
Well, and, and if I might add, a great thing is that this grandfather clock was actually made by my husband's grandfather. So it's sweet.
That's amazing.
Yes, okay, but on with the presentation. So Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here this evening with Kathleen Moriarty, who is our Metro North ABE Program Supervisor to give our annual Adult Education Center update to the school board. Our mission with Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening, Kathleen will be doing the majority of the presentation. I wanted to say that it's information only, there's no governance questions and a reminder that Metro North, that Columbia Heights Public Schools is a member of the Metro North Adult Basic Ed Collaborative. The core values that you will hear this evening are community, excellence, respect and innovation. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kathleen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. And thank you Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Kelly. I appreciate being invited to give a short overview update on adult basic ed programming as part of district programming. So thank you. As Kristin just mentioned, we are part of a consortium of eight school districts. And so the name for our consortium is Metro North Adult Basic Education. And then our site location in the Columbia Heights District is the Adult Education Center, Columbia Heights, Fridley. So we are a member site of the Metro North ABE. And this is our mission and vision. And in a nutshell, just to say, we work to, we strive to help all adult learners reach their full potential. And we do so by helping them with individualized goals and helping them meet those goals, whether they're academic or on the pathway for college or career. So as a site in Metro North Adult Basic Ed, our Adult Education Center is part of both the Columbia Heights School District and the Fridley District. So both districts are supporting districts for this location. I have our address on there and hopefully at some point we will be back open again and you're all welcome to stop by and visit in the future. But as a program, we offer free classes through state and federal funding for any adults 17 years on up, as long as they are not dual enrolled in high school. We are a year-round program, so we, we take a couple week breaks in the winter and in the summer, but otherwise we keep running year-round. And we have Monday through Friday morning classes and three nights a week. Our two core programs, the main ones are highlighted in blue for you there. It is our English as a Second or Other Language classes. We actually have seven levels at this site location. So we are a very large ESL site in Columbia Heights. We also have GED preparation, that's the other core program. And we have a lot of students who are pre-GED, so they're on that pathway, but still working on building their basic skills in math reading, writing and digital literacy skills, which of course has been highlighted very much so recently. But that is an area that we work on as well. And then we have a lot of other supporting offerings, citizenship preparation, career pathway courses in some of the areas listed there. So for our past year, and we always have a number of different years, but our state reporting year typically runs May 1st through April 30th. But due to COVID-19, the state actually altered the year. The Literacy Action Network, organization that supports statewide ABE. And so the year that we're reporting on is from March 14th, 2019 through March 13th, 2020. In adult basic ed, the classes that we offer and the funding formula that, that supports us is largely based on student contact hours. So when students are in their seats in the classes, those contact hours feed into our budget for the next year. And of course, with the recent changes to our programming, which I'll highlight at the end of the slides, that required some change for, for tracking the contact hours. But this past year, as noted, and it was true statewide, our student contact hours were 96,846. And that was in serving 964 individuals at our site. Majority of our learners fall into that age category listed there of 25 to 44 years old. And as I mentioned, while we are open to both native-born native English speakers and non-native English speakers, this particular site draws a large number of ESL students. So we see folks who have native languages, 30-plus different native languages, very similar to the full Columbia Heights District. So to highlight just a few things, we are very busy this past year in all our core programming. But I just wanted to pull out a few highlights of some things that were new. So those in bold were different or new this past year. With our federal funding, we have federal accountability through the national reporting system. And so we do administer standardized testing, both for placement and for progress testing for our learners. And this past year, we had to roll out a new standardized test, the TAE, that stands for Test of Adult Basic Ed, 1112 version. And that was a big deal. It was quite different from the old test, the length of the test was different. That test, it has three different parts, there's reading, language and math. And it required us to change how we did our intake and registration and how we organized our progress testing in the classroom. We also were awarded the first year of a three-year federal Integrated English Literacy and Civics Grant. We just completed two years of that grant that we had been awarded and that cycle ended and we reapplied and we were awarded a three-year grant. It's $100,000 each year, so that's great for our program. And just a quick note as part of that, so that class, it, it allowed us, that grant allowed us to offer an additional class at our site the last couple of years, and it's advanced ESL class. And those students obviously do focus on civics with rights and responsibilities in the community as well as English skills. And then they also have a job readiness focus. So we partner with the job training center at Career Force and they have this past year come out on site and offered workshops to the students. We also, with that class, were able to take a field trip to the Capitol this past year during ABE Lobby Day. So that was very exciting for students. Another new offering this past year, as part of our programming, we focus on the academics for learners, but all of the families that we serve often have lots of other needs. And so we make a lot of referrals to outside resources. And this past year, we decided to host some resource fairs on site. If you want to go to the next slide, I can show you some of those, ooh, it got a little changed around there, but that's okay. It gives you a sense of, we brought a lot of these resources on site. We were able to offer two resource fairs before, before we ended onsite programming recently. But this is just an example of the partnership and all the great resources in our community, serving the families that, that attend our school. And the next slide shows some images from one of the resource fairs. So you see a student who's actually registering to vote with League of Women Voters, which was fantastic. And then the other slide gives you a little glimpse of some students milling around at the many different resource tables that were there and speaking to the library representative. And then this slide just shows a quick snapshot of our tour at the Capitol Building. We were joined by other ABE programs and classes. So there are a lot of different students, but the students were just in all of the building. You can see a student there taking a photo and learning some about the history. So that's just a quick glimpse. And then looking where we are now, like everyone else, just like K-12, we had to make an immediate and swift shift to all online education. So we're in the midst of that now. But right before all that happened, we had been partnering with the Columbia Heights Police Department for a number of years where they come and visit our classes. And then the chief and I this past year met several times to plan out a project where we would partner with the Constitution Center on their policing in a more perfect union program. It's a training program for officers, but we wanted to combine it with sharing information with our learners at the Adult Ed Center. Again, who are largely immigrant learners and come with different ideas about policing and different ideas about our policing in the US. So we are looking to create a curriculum that would be offered to our higher level class students on policing in the US, on community policing models such as in Columbia Heights and, and the purpose of that, the impact of that. And to talk about rights and responsibilities, both of officers, police officers in protecting members of the community and in community members' role in working with officers. So the Columbia Heights Library Foundation did award us a grant for that. And as I note in the slide, that is on hold right now. So we will see when we're able to, to kick that off in planning. Otherwise, we're recruiting another C-Tup America member that we've had for a number of years now at our site. That's Community Technology Empowerment Program. That member gets to instruct directly on digital literacy skills. Super key right now with all of our online learning. And then I just highlight there that we've been offering our classes via Google Meet, Google Classroom, multiple distance learning platforms, via SiteWeebly page that we've had for years and has really just been super useful and so forth. We've also just started last week, a Chromebook loner program. We have very limited number of Chromebooks, but we really want to get them out there to the learners who don't have a device and can't connect with our classes. So we're starting to work on that. The last slide shows you the picture of the two students. Those were back in the days when we were onsite. They were learning to use their phones and using a distance learning platform on their phones, coming in handy now. And then the photo on the right actually shows our Intro to Healthcare class that met on Saturday mornings and made a quick conversion to online when we went online. And they all showed up and they all completed the course for entry-level healthcare positions. Our website is listed there, feel free to visit us and learn more about our Adult Ed Center site and the consortium as a whole. And again, I thank you very much for, for listening and learning a little bit more about your district programming in adult basic ed.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions? Molly.
Just a huge thank you for all of the work that you do with our students there. My only question is just to confirm, and I'm sorry if I should know this already, but are there residency requirements for the students in these programs?
Yeah, so that's actually a great question. Adult basic ed programming is statewide. The programming is offered through the districts, but because people work in different district locations and live in different locations throughout the state, all ABE programs are open to anyone to attend. However, of course, most people are from the district where the site is located.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good question, Molly. I actually didn't know that either. More, more questions? Well, all right, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Kathleen, for taking the time out of your schedule to be here and Kristin for, for this, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to a department update from Technology Security and All right, we will move on to a department update from Technology Security and Building Operations. Brian, do you want to introduce who you have with you tonight?
Yes, thank you, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Just give me a second to get my screen shared here. Okay. There we go. This evening, I have with me Manager of Technology Department, Corey Metling, and Manager of Buildings and Grounds, Alex Nguyen. And we are going to go through a department update, kind of give you a brief overview. Alex and Corey will do the majority of the talking this evening. And they'll just give you a brief overview of of technology and buildings and grounds, some of the things that we've done this year, and how kind of COVID has affected us in our departments, or in those given departments, and just kind of forecasting what the next year looks like, even though there's a lot of unknowns there. But we'll do our best to kind of forecast what what we're planning for right now. So our mission, again, creating our Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all along, all succeed. Our core values as our departments, you can see stars across all the core values, and we really feel that it's something that we live as we should with our district core values every day in our departments. Again, this is not an, this is not an action or nor board government, board governance for this. It's just an informational item, giving information on technology, security, and buildings and grounds. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Corey to take off with the Technology Department.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Kelly. I'm Corey Metling, and I am here tonight to provide the Technology Department update and discuss how our department serves the district. Our technology philosophy statement, we believe technology is a critical tool for excellence by engaging all students, families, and staff in collaborative and innovative learning that is equitable, efficient, and effective. Our technology department staff, so in addition to Director Hannikins and myself, we have Sherry Byer, who's a primary support for the high school, and also helps with several other functions at a district-wide level, including the district website. We have Mike Jasmer, who is the primary support at North Park Elementary, and also provides audio and video system support for various district functions. We have Jody Larson-Kenny, who is the primary support for both Highland and Valley View Elementaries. We have Herman Atiyogbe, who is the primary support for Columbia Academy. And we have Barb Erickson, who is our administrative assistant for our department. Our primary responsibility is to support the staff and students in technology-related problems and requests. These come in many varieties, such as computers and tablets, printers and copiers, phones and fax machines, network and internet connectivity, digital security for network and computers, system accounts and email, projector and audio systems, web access and web filtering, door and proximity card access, and security and cameras. We have different processes for initiating support requests for staff and students. For staff, they start by submitting help desk requests from our online support portal. That request is then assigned to a member of the tech team based on the type of request and the building location. And the tech, the assigned tech will then work with the staff member to resolve that request. For students, we don't have an online support portal in the same way that we do for staff. So instead, what they did prior to distance learning was to come to the tech department office in their building during designated support hours with their device. They would sign in on the student support log at the tech office. So we had documentation of their visit and what the problem was. And the tech support staff would work with the student to help them with their issue. During distance learning, quite a bit different, but they did go through a similar process over the phone where they would call into our technology support helpline. They would provide their name and contact information along with the reason for their call. And then that information was entered into a support log, and the call was forwarded to a tech support member based again on the building that the student attends. Then the tech support staff would work with their student to help them resolve the issue. So here we can see the number of support cases that have been resolved over the course of a school year, both for staff and students. Just over a thousand staff requests and nearly fourteen hundred total student support incidents. Some of the new things that the Technology Department implemented this school year are listed here. So we set up one hundred and thirty-five new computers for staff, primarily at the high school and district office. Around nine hundred new Chromebooks were set up for students in grades three, six, and nine. The high school had thirty-one classrooms, which received new projection systems to allow all classrooms there the capability of wireless projection. We have implemented a new faxing system, which is online browser-based and provides greater security than traditional faxing and emailing while also eliminating the need for an actual fax machine to be able to send and receive faxes. And we upgraded our core networking equipment at Highland. So our forecast for the upcoming school year, we will be setting up around seventy-five new staff computers, which will primarily be for Columbia Academy staff. We will be setting up a little over a thousand computers for next year's second, third, sixth, and ninth grade students. We will be replacing several projection systems at Columbia Academy, which will then provide them the capability of wireless projection. And we will be upgrading our network network equipment at the high school, the Highlander Center, the district office, and the family center. And I will pass it back to Director Hannikins.
Thanks, Corey. It's via Zoom. It's kind of hard to insert and add additional information or add a my own comment to things with the delay. But I just wanted to add that on this last slide here, and just a just a special note or an additional note that typically our replacement cycle for our one-to-one initiative currently grades three through twelve is is every year we'd buy new devices for the new third-grade class, the new sixth-grade class, and the new ninth-grade class. And we have second grade on there because of of where we are right now and some of the conversations around what is next school year going to look like. We really felt like we really needed to prepare. Felt like we had the capability to add that additional grade level based on where we're at. You know, we we knew after the one-to-one initiative was finished and we met our goal at grades three through twelve, that K one and two, you know, really were our next conversation and how we were going to handle those three grade levels moving forward. And and I think COVID kind of answered that question for us, and we knew that we needed to focus on second grade and 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 then with our remaining devices that we already have and how really just at least formulate a plan if necessary for full distance learning next year to make sure that we can really meet those needs for the district. So we're really planning in that area. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with, or at least some of that has to do with, you know, what what we're speculating for next year's school year to start to look like. And the the remote support, it looks simple in the process. They call, we connect remotely if we have to, and we work over the phone to repair it. But it's it's definitely been challenging for the team to change and do completely remote support. We do have a level of drop-off here where families, students can come and drop a device off and or at least previously to this week, drop a device off if they're having problems and just pick up a replacement device. So we streamline that as much as possible, knowing that we had that need as well. So it's definitely been a big undertaking. But before I talk anymore about that, I I think we need we need to keep going and and talk about security. This is just a note from a security staffing perspective. Really, it's our partnerships with Columbia Heights Police Department. We have our liaison officers at both the high school and the middle school. And then we work with the police department to help support traffic. We do, we do pay for that. And but if anybody's been down by Columbia Academy and Valley View when they're helping support the traffic down there, it's a definite need. We do have some security guards that we also contract with company. We have one that's daytime that goes around the whole district. And then we have one that's evening that helps with the events at the high school. And then, you know, the Technology Department itself, as Corey mentioned earlier, works to maintain the cameras and card access system. As far as, you know, what we're looking at in the future here, secure entries at all sites. We haven't been able to say that at this point. North Park Elementary has been a challenge for us. Once we finish the construction project this fall, we'll be able to, or this in August, we'll be able to say that all of our sites have secure entry. We have a project to modify the secure entry at Columbia Academy as well. That's happening this summer. We've had card access at all sites for some time. We just updated our intrusion detection systems at all sites. And we are expanding our camera system. So this next school year, through the construction project, North Park Elementary will have expanded cameras on their site, and then Highland Elementary, through capital investment, will have expanded camera access at their site, giving all schools a greater level of camera access moving forward. And with that, I'll move it to Buildings and Grounds and let Alex take over.
Thank you, Director Hannikins. Good evening, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Thanks for having me while I give you an update on our Buildings and Grounds Department. So our Buildings and Grounds philosophy is committed to providing our students, staff, and stakeholders with a safe and clean environment that is conducive to the development of lifelong learners. And here's a brief list of public custodians district-wide, kind of laid out by building. You have Director Hannikins, Technology Security and Building Operations. You have myself, Manager of Buildings and Grounds. Then you have the listed, the three elementaries. And then we have a list of the high school, Columbia Academy, and our district-wide custodians as well, that kind of help out all over. Few things we like to maintain around the district, follow established cleaning guidelines at all buildings, operate and maintain all heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems as efficiently as possible. Focus on health and safety is a top priority for Columbia Heights schools. Be second to none for customer service, making sure you know, our customers, students, staff, community are well taken care of when they're entering our buildings or on our grounds. Facilitate the proper maintenance of the facility grounds and ensure that all events are set up for optimal experience. We also maintain that we are in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations related to district facilities and grounds, as well as health and safety programs. Facilitate the proper preventative maintenance on all district equipment, continually evolve and adjust to stay ahead of the curve on new technologies and operational procedures. Just making sure that we stay as efficient and effective as possible with every aspect of our day-to-day operations. We also manage capital improvement projects, working with district administration as well as building administration, and forecasting and managing long-term facilities maintenance projects. And also COVID cleaning protocol, just to touch on this. Making sure that food service and childcare programs currently are clean every day thoroughly, as well as making sure they're disinfected in the high-touch areas, railings, bathrooms, door handles, drinking fountains, anything that is very high-touch area that has a lot of use, we make sure that we disinfect daily. We've added paper towel dispensers, even if they're our hand dryers in the bathroom, just to give an extra option for anyone using the facilities. Additional equipment we purchased. We purchased an electrostatic can sprayer, so you know, normally you spray the top of a table or counter and it you just spray the top. This will capsulate the whole entire table, so everything is sprayed and disinfected. We have Kyvac No Touch Cleaning Machines that'll help maintain and elevate our cleanliness in bathrooms as well as other areas. We've also added cleaning supplies, disinfecting chemicals, gloves, disinfecting wipes, as well as face masks. And then we turn to the construction projects. Obviously, there's pictures you guys have, everyone has seen from the tour last week, heavy remodels at North Park with the additions as well. And this summer, we're also going to tackle the rest of the roof at North Park. So that'll have a very nice new complete roof. Valley View will be getting the majority of their windows replaced. They're original, so they're definitely do. High school bathroom remodel will be starting this summer, as well as Columbia Academy's secured entrance, so. And here's a snapshot of the high school media center after it was newly carpeted or re-carpeted. So just a few additional projects we have going on, LED lighting conversion district-wide, our energy management that runs our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. We're upgrading that district-wide. Should be done with that this summer. We're also adding at North Park Elementary and the high school are adding additional solar panels. So we're excited about that. And just a few flooring upgrades at the high school, like you see in the picture, as well as Columbia Academy and Valley View.
So quick before we get to questions, I just wanted to insert on the Buildings and Grounds that, you know, as as we've had to adjust on the fly here with everything that's happening, looking at new guidance from CDC and and the state, and and it definitely seems like we're always waiting for guidance, but when guidance does come, we need to adjust quickly and and how we what our procedures are, how often do we clean areas, cleaning areas multiple times if they're high-touch areas and and new procedures around food service and, you know, custodians wearing gloves and masks, and and what are procedures around those areas, our childcare programs? So it's definitely been a big adjustment for the team. And and we've we forged forward with cleaning the buildings, some of them in 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 ways that we haven't been able to clean them for quite some time, like Highland Elementary, where we have summer programming going on almost the entire summer. So we've definitely been hard at it and been trying to stay up to date on on guidelines and moving forward with keeping the buildings looking great, and hopefully we'll have kids coming back soon.
All right, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I could, I'm just scrolling as I go. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind stopping the screen sharing, that'd be, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to take a quick moment to just thank all of our custodians that are doing all the hard work, keeping everyone safe. I know that their job is typically, you know, not recognized as much as they should be. But this is just a really hard time, and I but this is just a really hard time, and I know it's challenging, and we just appreciate everything that they're doing to keep people safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you so much again. We all echo, I think we can guess that what Molly says, can nod, but thanks. And now we will welcome up the CAP team.
Okay, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I am happy to be here with Allison Thompson, who's an art teacher at Valley View and our arts coordinator for the district, and Hannah Stark, who is an arts teacher at Columbia Heights High School. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this evening, we're focusing on the core values of community, excellence, collaboration, and innovation. This evening, we have an informational presentation for the school board and will return seeking approval for the Comprehensive Arts Program Plan for the, for 2020 through 2023, and that will take place on June 9th at the next school board meeting.
So first, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, it's through some of spoken tonight. Okay, um, you might want to know what CAP is. It's the Minnesota Comprehensive Arts Planning Program, and it provide, our planning program, yep, provides assistance to select Minnesota public school districts as they plan and implement a comprehensive pre-K-12 school arts education program. And some of you were around back in 2008 when we got it the first time, and so this was the second time we've had it. CAP helps local school community teams design three-year long-range arts education plans for all students. CAP also provides financial and technical assistance for two years through workshops, site visits, leadership development, and resource material.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Stark, I'm one of the high school teachers. I just saw you all quite recently. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the timeline of CAP. So in 2019, the spring, we applied for and were accepted into the program. And then Allison, Xena, and I went and received training at Purpatch this year and last year. And then in fall of 2019, we initiated Phase One Stakeholder Input, and so we gathered with all of the arts teachers in the district and participated in a day-long vision workshop. And you can kind of see some of our notes from that day. It was a really impactful day where we got to get together and really dream and scheme. And it was from that day that we drafted our strategic, strategic directions for the next three years. Over the winter, we initiated Phase Two of Stakeholder Input from the community. So we got input and ideas from, for on each of the strategic directions. So we had a meeting with community members, just kind of talked about what could arts in heights and in the district, but also in the city at large. And then we continued the work into the spring. We used a sub, we kind of formed a subcommittee, and we used all that input to compile this three-year plan, which is really exciting. And we met with all of those stakeholders, the full committee, the arts team, as well as district departments, to make sure that this is feasible and that we had support moving forward.
So the document's a little dense, and it has not only the strategic directions, but it also has action steps. And Xena has gone and photocopied it for you, and she's going to provide it for you in your packets on Friday. But we wanted to just highlight the most important parts of the strategic direction, so you know what we're looking at. Strategic direction number one is authentically collaborating for professional growth. So this is focused on the teachers. Strategy one was creating systems that enhance opportunities for collaboration among the art teachers. Strategy B is building a positive cultural community. And strategy C is improving professional development for our arts educators.
So for each of these strategic directions, and there's four of them, there's, as you can see, action steps. There's also on the document that we'll send prior to seeking approval, budget implications, and a timeline over the next three years of when each of these items will be accomplished. So there's a lot there, but as Allison mentioned previously, the district has received CAP, and out of that very first rendition of CAP, we were able to create the Height in the Arts or the HA Committee and have some pretty great infrastructures happening as is. So for, for budget implications, CAP isn't a large sum of money that we're receiving to implement all these things. It's more, it's about $2,500 for two, each year for two years. And that's really to fund substitute costs for any professional development that happens, or any types of planning that goes into launching this, this program. So it's really, the Purpatch Center provides us with that infrastructure and support and guidance, and a, you know, a nominal amount of funding that we're very thankful to utilize in order to launch this, this plan. That being said, as you can see for the strategic direction at the bottom, the budget implications, really, we, we will utilize the CAP funding for, as I mentioned, subs, but then also any district professional developments tapping into the district funds for that. So braiding, braiding funding.
So the second strategic direction is providing arts-rich infrastructure through a variety of funding sources. So this is really focusing on how, informing the art educators on how, how we think about budget, because so many of us have high-budget items, and also thinking about things like inventories and facilities and supplies. So strategy A is establishing funding sources, so writing grants and kind of gaining an understanding of budgets and systems. Strategy B, evaluating and updating facilities, inventories, and supplies. So creating, again, going back to that system, really looking at how we use our facilities and how inventories are used across K-8 or K-12 arts education, and then develop a systems manual. And that's really just an onboarding tool that we can use to help teachers and help with communication between arts teachers, because we have so many moving parts throughout the year.
And budget implications for a strategic direction, too. If there were a grant, oftentimes, there's a matching that the district would be obligated to, so really reviewing that if, if the committee were to apply for a grant in the future, a stipend for arts coordination, which is a currently existing expenditure, and then hourly work beyond contracted time to develop, for example, in strategy C, that manual.
Strategic direction number three is advocating for the arts through community connections. Strategy A is developing an advocacy campaign, and strategy B is creating equitable opportunities and connections. And this is really about making that connection from the district to the community at large, which is really exciting for many of you.
As many of you have seen, Columbia Heights Public Schools and the boosters have a calendar that goes out with all of our athletic events and our activities. And so the, one of the interesting conversations that was had during this process was perhaps creating one for the arts, a similar poster that we could push out. So that's one example of a deliverable. And for budget implications, that would be hourly work beyond the contracted time, and then consultant or contractor fee for artists in residence and printing costs.
And then the final strategic direction is improving comprehensive arts curriculum. So this is one of the, kind of the outcomes required by the CAP process, but we are also, as we discussed in an earlier meeting this year, we have new arts standards. So this is really just an opportunity to integrate those new standards. So strategy A is realigning K-12 curriculum, and then strategy B is continuing to evaluate opportunities for improving course offerings throughout the district, or just content offerings, so not necessarily through courses, but through other opportunities.
And sometimes curriculum work comes with hourly work beyond contracted time, and that would be the budget implications for strategic direction four. So again, the full, more dense packet will be included in the next board update, and I will be returning on June 9th to seek approval for this plan.
Great, does anybody have any questions? Sean, you faked me out with the side of the face itch. Yeah, all right. Well, thank you so much for presenting tonight. We look forward to seeing you again at another meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Tara, Talk role Director of Teaching and Learning, and Dan Robleski, the Principal of Columbia Heights High School on the out-of-state field trips.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Principal Robleski and I are here tonight to share about overnight and out-of-state field trips planned for next school year. Our mission in Columbia is of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And really, our out-of-state field trips really do encompass all of our core values, so we included all of those tonight. And this is an informational presentation to the school board, as it has already been approved in previous years. As we think about field trips in Columbia Heights, we really are thinking about them as providing worlds of opportunities for each of our students, but also basing it off of research. And we know research shows that by providing these enrichment activities or opportunities, there are increased rates of critical thinking skills, empathy, and tolerance. And as we focus in on the arts in Columbia Heights, there's a lot of research that shows that as well, that supporting arts achievement really supports our students for that lifelong learning, learning and 21st century preparedness for the workforce. So I'm going to pass it off to Principal Robleski, who will share about the New York Study Seminar.
Chair Severson. Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Kelly, good evening. Most of you have an idea, background of our New York Study Seminar, and I guess I'd like to highlight that multifaceted field experience that our students get, and to take that curriculum and extend the classroom into a whole new world of opportunities for our students. So in the seminar study that we do, we focus on college visits, professional experience, including our clinics, classes, and numerous tours. We focus with our students on collaborating, camaraderie, critical thinking, and creativity. Our students are able to perform with professionals and also watch professional performances. One thing that I'd like to caution everybody as we present this information tonight, that COVID-19, as, as you've heard in most of the presentations tonight, is going to be dictating, especially for our New York Study Seminar, how this trip will happen if it does happen. But we will be following the guidelines by the Minnesota Department of Health and the DART Department of Education on all out-of-state travel. This is an outline of what the board has approved on our, our seminar studies. This picture just brings back great memories. This was, our kids worked, I believe with Reed Kelly, and I can't remember the other gentleman that was working with, but our kids learned to dance in a matter of minutes, and it was quite the experience. But boy, does that bring back a lot of joy and fun to watch those, the smiles on their faces, just, you know, it's that MasterCard, it's priceless. Look at that, that's, it's well worth it. Um, our fundraising efforts and donations will focus on our local businesses, sales, our booster club, supporting us, our, our, our parents and staff doing bingo and meat raffles, working the concession stands, some support from US Bank stadiums, and some opportunities they have for us, the spaghetti dinner supported by the music boosters, and our local restaurants, as well as grocery bagging and coupons that we sell, and that fine arts chocolate that everybody loves. Does anybody have any questions?
I do love that chocolate, Dan. You're right. Let's, any questions, just throw your hand up. All right, seeing none, we'll see you back here. This is on the next agenda, I would assume, correct?
No, it has already been approved.
Oh, it's already been approved. He's just.
Share about fundraising.
Oh, presented with the fundraising, sorry. Right, we already approved this. Thank you for that clarification. And yeah, looking forward to getting some of that chocolate, and hoping I will have access to it amidst all the COVID stuff. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on to action items. I would like to welcome back Denise Sumsrum, Director of Finance and Operations.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to seek approval for the preliminary FY 2020, 2021 budget. I presented it on May 12th to you, and I just have this one page on the screen. This is the one page of all the funds that I'm asking you to approve tonight. So I'm asking you to approve a revenue budget of $59,313,072, and expenditure budget of $60,195,276 for FY 21.
All right, can I get a motion to carry that forward, please? Was that John?
Yep, so moved.
Okay. Second, Laura. Second, second from Laura. Great, discussion. Lorian.
Yeah, just kind of more comment, I think, a couple things. One, for anybody who might be watching this meeting later, we did have kind of an in-depth presentation and conversation at our last meeting regarding this. And Denise, if you could just confirm that, you know, we are going into kind of a decrease in the fund balance, but that, that still falls within the board direction in terms of the percentage of the fund balance?
Yes, your, your range for fund balance is six to 12%, and this is a 9.36% fund balance will be left.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, hearing none, Molly, this is a roll call vote, and again, just because we're online, and Holla has mentioned her internet connectivity is going in and out, so we'll see if she is able to answer when it comes to her name.
Hey, Severson. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Severson, could you hear me? Sorry, maybe it's me cutting. Hi.
Thank you. Mueller.
Hi.
A Samurai.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Larkin.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Denise. We'll hear about the long-term facilities maintenance for 2019, 2020. Director Hennekenz.
Thank you, Chair Severson. Just give me a second here, we're trying to stop video sharing for Denise. There we go. All right, so this evening, the gen item, this is getting close to the time of year where we usually approve our new long-term facilities maintenance plan. We have a 10-year plan. It's a plan that we have to submit to the Department of Education for, to receive our long-term facility maintenance dollars. And this year, with our North Park Elementary bond project, we had additional abatement costs, and within long-term facility maintenance dollars, there's a category for any project that will exceed, any asbestos abatement project that will exceed $100,000 for a single project at a single site. And original estimates were that we would not exceed that $100,000, and through the project, we found additional areas of abatement that were necessary, and so that increased the scope of that initial look at that project. And so we are exceeding now that $100,000 in order to receive or have access to additional funding for. that $100,000. In order to receive or have access to additional funding for those, for that project, as allowed through the long-term facility maintenance funding, we need to submit a revised planned, plan that includes those dollars. So you were sent kind of a spreadsheet of the long-term facilities. So under 2020, which is the second column within that long-term facility spreadsheet, there's a line item that typically is zero because we, we don't forecast that we're going to have exceeding $100,000 projects in that one category of asbestos removal and encapsulation. And so we have a dollar amount added there for that project specifically of $151,708. So upon approval of this new revised long-term facilities maintenance plan, we can submit to the state and we have access to those excess dollars. Otherwise, those dollars would have to come from somewhere else. So this evening, we're seeking approval of this revised plan.
Right. Thanks Brian. Could we get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
John, second?
Second.
Molly? John?
Just real quick, we had an opportunity to go through North Park and Brian, you showed us the additional areas that were found. I think that it's, I think we have to, but I certainly think it's in the best interest to, to get rid of any asbestos that we're well for the safety of all of our students and staff.
Sorry about that. Yes, correct. We have, even some of the asbestos that we found, you know, is in the tunnels. Obviously, students are accessing the tunnels, but through the project, the workers still have to access the tunnels. So, you know, it's, it's in student areas and non-student areas. They, they really liked to use that stuff in the past. So it's definitely in our best interest to, to try to get rid of it as, as quickly as possible. And through this project is allowing us to do a really majority of what's left in that building.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none, let's have a vote.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis. Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Let's talk about the sustainability project.
Thank you Chair Severson, members of the board Superintendent Kelly. We have for you, as for action item, a request to approve, to enter an agreement with Waste Energy Canada on a sustainability project that we presented at the, at a previous school board meeting in detail. That's, that sustainability project was a biodigester and a biomass boiler. And I think everybody will recall that, that conversation, taking existing compostable material that North Park Elementary produces and turning that compostable material into energy through the biomass boiler and using it as a heat source to heat water for the building. And this evening, earlier this evening, on, through the donations, we had a donation from Waste Energy Canada for $269,080 in in kind, which is the biodigester and the biomass boiler. So we've, we've worked very hard at getting together and collaborating with this company, collaborating with the sustainability work that's already doing, collaborating with the construction that's already happening and really trying to bring it all together to really showcase what sustainability can look like at that building and at the same time save the district money. This agreement will have us producing curriculum to go around this, around this project so that the students are engaged in this and also sharing that curriculum to Waste Energy Canada and working with Waste Energy Canada as a demonstration site for the area and having it as an available resource scheduled through the district center for them to bring out people to showcase this sustainability project. So it's, it's definitely can really, it really is going to put North Park on the map in sustainability and we're, we're very happy and proud to be able to put this together. So this agreement just kind of outlines terms in, in the, in this area, you know, like our maintenance and support, our, our ongoing warranties and, and what, what the district is responsible for providing, like the curriculum and, and what Waste Energy Canada is responsible in providing, the biggest being the $269,080 in, in equipment. So this evening, we're, we're requesting approval of, of, of that
All right. To have motion move that forward.
So moved Laura.
Laura, thanks. Second?
Second. Lorian.
Thanks. Discussion. Lorian.
Yeah, just real quick. I think Brian and team, it's, this is such a great opportunity for, for us as a district and for North Park. I took some time today to read through the contract and feel like it was very favorable for the district. Lots of benefits and not a lot of risks. So I appreciate everything that the team did to put, put that together.
Thank you. And, and just a note, we, we did spend some significant time working with our legal counsel on the, on the contract and agreement to make sure that the terms were indeed the favorable terms that we wanted.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions? Laura, I see you unmuted.
Yeah. Yes. I actually do have one additional question. I, I don't recall whether or not we covered this at all. Are we the only grade school that is going to be able to have this? Or are there, there are other schools or school districts? Are we groundbreaking in this demonstration?
We, we are the only public school to have this, will be the only public school in the United States to have this. So yes, we are definitely groundbreaking in that area.
So North Park does it again. Thank you.
Highlanders do it again. That's right. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks Brian. That's very exciting. I guess we'll put this to a vote.
Thank you.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis. Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Moving on to graduation, welcoming Superintendent Kelly and Principal Robleski.
Madam Chair and members of the board, tonight, Principal Robleski and I are here to discuss graduation planning. As you know, it is always a wonderful and unique opportunity. This year presents an even more unique opportunity because of the pandemic. What we have and Principal, I'll be introducing Principal Robleski in a moment, to put up the PowerPoint are really two options for the board to review and one recommendation. The options, we've spent a lot of time on and we're hoping that it provides flexibility, but yet safety and security. So I am going to pass it to Principal Robleski right now, but I reserve the right to chime in once in a while. So there you go. Go ahead Dan.
Chair Severson, members of the board Superintendent Kelly, good evening. Tonight, I'm here to present some options for graduation. As Superintendent Kelly has expressed, numerous hours have gone into these plans and as everything that we do in Columbia Heights Public Schools is we want to keep the safety and security of our students and our families at the forefront. As you know, our miss, mission for our school district and our core values tonight really represent all of our values that our district supports. Our first option is the parking lot option, option number one. As you can see, our date would be June 25th. It would be in the upper parking lot or known as the east parking lot, furthest east parking lot. We would have two graduation ceremonies, one starting at five with the alphabet A through K and one starting at 7:30 L through Z. The duration of these ceremonies would be between 30 and 45 minutes and it's almost a pure split between the AK and LZ with the number of students approximately 112 each. A number of attendees, we have estimated with 115, 12 graduates, we figure there's going to be at least 150 participants in each ceremony. So these are not going to be small ceremonies at all. We're going to bring a lot of people together in a small confined area. But this is our numbers right now that we project that we'll have at each one. Again, the ceremony will be 30 to 45 minutes. I'll show you the stage set up in a minute, but to comply with social distancing, we will have myself, Superintendent Kelly, School Board Chair Severson and Assistant Principal Mr. Miller on stage. If school board members are planning on attending, we will be placing them near the stage as well. We will have two guest speakers and the student reader would be Ms. Gillis and she'll be called to the stage when it comes time to read the names. And we will have multiple speakers as needed for our multiple speakers. As you know, sharing speakers, we will need to be cleaning as we switch off and, and having number of people come to the stand and speak at the podium. There's going to be signage set up for each, each entrance and exit of the parking lots for people who will be working that night and communicating with the directions. It will be a very detailed plan here coming up next with the parking lot and getting people in and getting people out. One note that everybody needs to be aware of is that we will be renting a mobile stage and equipment from an outside vendor. That cost has not, we haven't had to incur those costs before. So if you can take a look, this is the entrance plan. We'll have to have numerous streets blocked off. We've worked with the city with this plan. And as you can see, first of all, just move my little marker here. This is, over here is Columbia Heights High School and the district office and Highland Elementary School is over here. If you look at the entrance here, this is the main entrance to the high school and that main parking lot. So the stage and the speaker systems and the screen will be set up to the left as you're facing north and all the cars will be facing south. Every car will be facing south. We're working with people if they have vans, which will be a, a trick to get them to park in the back. So that's a feat we're still working on. But as you can see, we will have one entrance in on Fillmore Street and people will come in through the parking lot and be directed to fill in each line, just kind of like at the state fair, how they fill one line up at a time. So we'll be working on that. This will be an undertaking and it will take us some time to get everybody in place. It will be a first come, first served. As you can see with the parking, we, we won't have a way of, of dictating who gets a lottery ticket just because of the flow of traffic. Students will be given a ticket and they'll, one car per student. Students will be given a ticket to allow them in with their one car into the lot. Gets a little more trickier on the way out. As you can see, we have three exit plans to, to flow out. Both are on Fillmore, which they'll take traffic facing, again, this way it will be an easy flow, an easy flow here. Traffic will be a concern of getting these people out of the parking lot because they'll have to back up, as well as these cars over here will need to be backed up and coming out on this entrance. So flow of traffic, the people coming out of this entrance here will flow out east on the 49th. The flow out of this entrance will flow out to west on 49th. And this, we will funnel people back into the area north on Fillmore and funneling them out that way. We're hoping that we've estimated or guestimated enough time to empty the parking lot so that we can start the, the next ceremony. I just want everybody to know that this is a concern of emptying out the parking lot with how every car is going to be positioned. And we're, we're hoping that there, there won't be any accidents. Here are some guidelines that we've put forth for our graduates and their family. No food or beverage will be allowed on the premise. There'll be no passing of objects or physical contact between participants' cars. More staff are going to be needed for crowd control in following these guidelines. Individuals may not walk up to the ceremony or participate outside of their vehicles. We'll be asking people of high, high-risk groups, as you can see there, underlying health condition, older, maybe grandparents, people who are feeling ill, we're going to ask and request that they stay home. We're going to allow one car per graduate and each household should be in that car. We're not carpooling. That does not comply with social distancing. We're going to ask that at all times, everybody and attendees stay in their car at all times. We have set up the lot. We've designed the, the system that they'll be six feet apart so that their windows can be down as we know it's the end of June, which could be hot. Graduation caps and gowns or any items will not be thrown outside of the car. And we don't want to encourage anybody again from leaving their vehicles. There'll be no public bathrooms provided as that again will allow people to leave their cars and that can cause some, maybe some chaos. People will not be allowed, participants will not be allowed to leave until the end of the ceremony. So once they're in, they're in till the end. Cancellation of this event, there's a couple of ways this would happen. One is in climate weather, the restrictions stipulated by the pandemic guidelines, government agencies canceling this type of gradu, graduation ceremony, and the liability insurance restrictions and the advice of our risk manager will play in the cancellation of this event. Our second option that we have on the PowerPoint tonight is a recorded graduation video ceremony. This would be done on July 5th. We will play this at 7:00 PM. The duration will be up to two hours in length and the number of attendees will be unlimited. One of the unique things that we do have in place for this is we're excited about, is on Tuesday, June 8th and June 9th, students will have the opportunity for a photo opportunity. The times will range from 7:00 to 9:00 PM both dates. We'll be doing it in the high school football field. Graduates will be coming in their car and one car only. Staff working this, the administrative team at the high school has volunteered to work this event. We've have the photographer grad images coming out to take photos and the graduate will be the only one allowed out of the car during this opportunity. We'll be asking all staff to be wearing masks and gloves, practicing social distancing, no more than 10 people in the gathering spot at one time. Students will be wearing their cap and gowns and will be asked to wear a mask. Graduate does not have a mask, one will be provided. We will be, students will have the option to wear that mask during their photo opportunity. If they choose to wear, they can. If they want to take it off at that time, they can as well. There's some considerations that we need to take in a, in effect when we, we talk about these options. And the first one foremost is if anybody's watching the news today, the hospitals and the respirators are at full capacity right now. And it's all over that the respirators are, are being used. So the first consideration is the health and safety of our students, staff, families and the participants during the pandemic. Due to the liability and the advertisement of the, the risk manager not to participate in this type of event during the pandemic. So we've talked to our, our risk manager. He has made the recommendation. He has made the recommendation that we do not participate in this type of option of graduation number one. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Kelly to back me up on this one. We do not have liability insurance. We would not be covered an event something transpires from this event.
I will weigh in at this point in time. We have talked to multiple people and one of the things that was advised is that we contact our liability insurance carrier, who is also our risk management person. And he's advising against the option one due to the great liability that we have and that we might compound it with liabilities that we already have. There are waivers, are exclusions in insurance that cover things like fungus, bacteria, viruses. It's really, it's a new domain, but he feels that we would exacerbate our risk and possibly not have we would not have liabilities, particularly, and we would have liabilities, particularly if people at the end, when emotions are high, don't follow the guidelines and get out of the cars to either say their last goodbyes or for whatever other reasons toss their hats in the air. They can trace it back to our event, which would have, you know, a combination of six hundred and twenty to six hundred and fifty people overall, which would be a sizable event and that there'd be a great deal of liability. We also talked to the city. And we were advised to talk to the city. We've had two meetings. Some of the board members can weigh in on that. We had an in-person meeting and then I had a phone call with the city manager and their attorney and the chief of police today. And they're saying that they can help us with the directions and traffic. However, they cannot do the crowd control actually on our own grounds. And so we'd have to handle that. We can't trespass people in advance. So there is a bit of risk there to be well-staffed. We've checked with workers' comp and if any of our staff would come down by being exposed, there'd be liability there in our workers' comp. And we're not sure if volunteers or anybody else that are not our direct employees would be covered under either policy. And so when we looked at that, we also contacted our legal counsel, who said that if we did plan one, which we were really pushing, we'd be at liability for putting people at risk, health and safety, both staff, students, and people in the community. Because if anybody did come down with a contagion, it would be traced back to our event. And it could be saying, we could have forecasted that, so it might be reckless, but not premeditated. So there's all kinds of red flags with that one. And so it's reluctantly that we put up on the slide that administration is really reluctantly recommending option two. What we have heard from parents and from students is that they really would like to walk across the stage. They really would like to have their pictures taken with their diplomas, which can't happen when we're in the parking lot because nobody can leave their cars, period. And it would be very hard for us to distribute the diplomas themselves other than placing them with a pincher through the windows. And so it would also give families a chance to watch their students walk across the stage with option two because it would still be the one car, even though. And then in the PowerPoint that goes out with the pre-recorded, all of those pictures would be collected and put into one memorable presentation that would be put out on the date of graduation. Am I correct in that, Dan?
Absolutely.
Have I missed anything else?
No, I just think what we've heard from our kids is that they really want that opportunity to walk across that stage and to have that photo opportunity and to be in that stadium. And this isn't what anybody wants. I think everybody needs to hear that the push was for option one. And seeing the liability and risk has given us no other real option but option two. And I think we're, we worked hard to get this option one going, but it's not, it's way too much of a risk. It puts too many people at risk.
So the governance question, do you have the next slide that is really to discuss what, which graduation plan option that you would be willing to approve? So Principal Robleski has a parent meeting tomorrow night. People are really concerned about what really is going on with graduation. We'd also like to state at this point that while the board is discussing this, there's always been some kind of party put on by a parent group afterwards. And although the guidelines are not calling for that, the school district in its own right is not authorizing that or planning that because that is always in the private sector of the parents. But it is something that we're not really recommending either as an admin team just because of the spread and I think we had in the news today, maybe some of you have seen it, spread from one graduate to a group of graduates because of after-graduation exposure. So with that, we'll pause to take questions or to let the board discuss what they think of the two options and what plan that they would endorse or support.
Natty, you're muted.
Thank you, John. So we would have a discussion now and then ask for a motion on a particular plan? And then ask for a first and second on that motion? Is that how this works?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm just going to say, I think, Natty, you're right that conversation about them at some point, someone would say, I'll make a motion to approve option one, someone would second it or option two. Then it would open up again for discussion if somebody wasn't in favor of it or whatever. You just need a first and a second for one or the other, get it up. My suggestion would be open it up for discussion first. Unfortunately, I think I see where this is going to end up personally.
Yeah, so let's open this up to discussion, like to hear from other board members. Any questions or thoughts? Again, yeah, I can't see you all at the same time, so I'm doing my best here.
I'll just, I'll just go since I'm not visible to anybody anyway. So I understand all the liability issues that come with option one. And from that legal standpoint, I feel like it's, it just absolutely makes sense to not take that kind of, to take that kind of fiscal risk. But I'd also like to point out, there's the moral responsibility, you know? There's the stuff that you can't put dollars on. Even though we would have rules and, you know, procedures, people are going to break them. It's on our clock. I feel like that's way too much of a risk. And I was going to ask about option two when the students, when the graduates are coming to get their pictures taken and all that stuff. Are there like limits to how many people can, how many students can come at a time? Because we need to make sure that's safe too.
Yes, absolutely. We have five-minute time slots for each one. We figure that as they line up inside the alley, that we'll be able to have people manage to keep people in their cars. No one will be allowed in that entrance. We'll have the parking lots blocked off. And if people start lining up on Forty-Ninth Avenue, if you've ever been at the airport and you're parking too long, they kind of shoo you along. That's our plan is that you're not going to be able to loiter in your car along Forty-Ninth Avenue. So we have it set up that there's approximately five to six cars, which would be about thirty-minute wait process is if they were in their car waiting to get their picture taken. So at no time would we have any, we're hoping to have no more than three cars in that waiting area at a time. Hopefully just two. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I'm just thinking that's going to take like weeks to get done logistically.
I think it's like two fourteen, thirteen-hour days, I think, is what we have.
Okay. Well, yeah, that sounds, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Holla.
With no breaks.
Yeah, no breaks. We have to have some break in case you need to catch up. So any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
This is Laura.
Laura, then Loriann. Sorry, Laura, go ahead.
Okay. Well, there's a number of things about, that weren't covered under option one that I actually find very concerning too. The time of year, sitting inside of a car, no beverages. That's going to be very warm if we have a medical emergency, like overheating, heat stroke, being able to be able to get those people out, that's going to be a problem. I reluctantly, you know, think that option two is going to be the safest and the most easily, the lowest risk, unfortunately. I think that's definitely where I would like to move.
Thank you, Laura. Loriann?
Yeah, I think, just a couple of comments. This is tough and I want to acknowledge that. And I think, you know, for people that are listening, you know, we've got six members on the board and four of you have seniors that are graduating this year. And the other two of us have recent high school graduates. And so I think, I mean, we've been there and this is unprecedented and this is really hard. I think, I appreciate the time that the administration has put on this. And, you know, to me, hearing from our risk manager, we've essentially been put on notice. You know, we have been put on notice that this, you know, that option one is not recommended and that there is a liability risk to the district. And I think that pretty much guides what we as a board need to do. You know, I also, you know, know that a graduation is really a time to celebrate, to applaud the achievement and congratulate each other on a job well done. I think we've talked before that, you know, so much of the graduation is not just the walking across the stage, but it's the gathering in the horseshoe after and the hugs and the flowers and the balloons. You know, the class of two thousand twenty really unfortunately has to pave the way in finding new and creative ways to have this camaraderie and celebration. And I also think that the board cannot condone or support any in-person gathering of our high school students, either onsite or off, that is in violation of executive orders. Put students at risk. And so I think, you know, we really need to look at what is in the best interest of our students and our staff and our overall district and the legal and financial health of that and help these kids and their families still celebrate an incredible achievement. And I feel like option two is the way that that can be done.
All right. Any other thoughts? John?
Was involved with the initial conversations of the planning for the drive-in parking lot graduation ceremony. And I couldn't, Dan was talking about earlier about wanting people to understand that that was absolutely their first choice foremost, the best thing for the kids. And I witnessed the enthusiasm from both administration as well as city officials being willing to work with it. And quite frankly, the liability piece is what kind of, in my mind, kind of popped the balloon on that one. I have, my daughter's graduating. I was hoping that there would be something like that for her. But as an elected official and a board member for Columbia Heights Public Schools, I cannot in good conscience support all the different things that potentially go wrong with that. And again, Holla talked about, you know, morally as well, but just from strictly a liability standpoint, it takes one person to get out of their car. We talked about those things. We had those conversations. What would we do if people weren't following the rules? And I guess in my mind, in the back of my mind, I thought, well, you know, at least we've got some coverage if something, you know, were to happen, but we don't. So I will be, when others have all had their opportunity to speak, I'd be happy to bring a motion forward, you know, for option two. But somebody else can as well if that's what they want to do. But sadly, I don't see option one being the right idea.
Go ahead, Molly. I see you unmuted.
Thank you, Natty. Yeah, I mean, just, you know, thank you, Loriann, for stating what you said and just acknowledging, you know, that this is hard for, mostly for our students. I know that it's also hard for admin, staff, you know, family members. I think that, you know, part of me was kind of crushed, of course, just because we provided this opportunity. And as a parent, we all know, we were hoping for something different. But we do have a social responsibility in this and, you know, it's not about us, right? It's about everybody at this time. And we have to remember, you know, how hard it would be for, for example, if there are students that are high-risk to not be able to participate at all. So things like that come up. And this is absolutely heartbreaking and admin, I just really appreciate all of the work that you did going into this. I know this crushes you as well, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to concur on that. I think I'm the last one to talk. And I was with John and the administration team and I saw the ways that there's been just a tremendous effort to be creative in this and to think about what's best for the kids and what would make the most memorable experience for them. And I tell you, I've been thinking that too, just like, you know, three others. I have a senior and I think as parents, we've imagined a moment our kids might graduate since that first day of kindergarten. And I pulled out my son's kindergarten picture and saw it and, you know, it's a strange ending to this. But I want to say that I think what's happening is we're developing a grade level of kids who will be more specifically minded and others-focused than ever. Hopefully that's what's taken away from this, not what was lost, but what they can gain through this experience. But I do, you know, I'm sad, I want to grieve this with them, the loss of something that they've been looking forward to and that we as parents have been looking forward to too. So understanding hard feelings, difficult feelings as they come about. So, but I agree. I think we should proceed with option two, given all that we've heard. Go ahead, John.
I reluctantly make a motion to go with option two.
Can we have a second?
I second that.
I'll go with Holla on that one. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to state, I mean, I don't want to be like the one who's always making lemonade. But, you know, it's a tough situation. It's a huge disappointment. And like everyone's expressed here, you know, this is not, this is not what people planned for. But at the same time, it's going to be memorable. I mean, this is going to be the class of two thousand twenty. And they're going to be the ones that pave the way for all sorts of brand-new things. So trailblazers, you know, they have it hard sometimes.
Well said. Any other discussion?
I guess just really quickly, I'm sorry, Natty. Just real quickly, one other thing is, you know, yes, we're all disappointed about option one not being able to happen, but I so appreciate the photo opportunity and you listening, you as admin, that you have listened to the kids and really what they're wanting and providing that. I know that that's not going to be easy days of work for everybody, but I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Yes, agreed. Agreed. Yeah, I totally want to echo that, especially having been in situations of trying to go through all those logistics. Oh my God, kudos to you guys.
Thank you. I think we're, I think we're all sad. I don't know how else to say it, if there's something we can give the kids. You know, you talk about the kids, the staff is sad. The staff look forward to that night. They look forward to walking, greeting the kids as they come out of the stadium. I know it's about the kids, but I think people need to hear the staff is sad about this too. This isn't what, we're in the kid business and this hurts.
John, I saw that hand.
To administration and superintendent, depending upon how this vote goes, if it passes as the second option being the direction we go, there's going to be people that are not happy about that and I suspect that you'll be hearing about that. I for one, as a school board member, would encourage you to direct them to me to at least least explain my personal perspective on why we went down the path we went and maybe take some of the heat off of you. This is a board decision that's being made tonight with options presented by administration. So if in fact you have issues with that, please feel, personally for me anyway, feel free to have people contact me.
Dan, would you be able to share the PowerPoint one more time so we can read, so I can read what the actual motion is before we take a vote? Kind of, I'll read some of the details of that plan one more time? Is that possible?
Yep.
Sorry, Brian.
Do you have it up? Does that go up?
Nope, not seeing the screen share. Think you guys are supervising at a football game. It's being stubborn?
We're getting it.
Madam Chair, I believe it's in Board Book.
Oh, is it? Okay, sorry. Thank you. Don, as long as we're getting it here, sorry.
Yep.
Just go back to option, the details of option two. Okay, this is the video ceremony, just so people can see again. Do you feel like that as we're doing this, we would be able to stick to that nine to seven PM on two different days? Dan, do you think that's doable? Or do you need flexibility based on extenuating circumstances?
If there's situations that arise, we're going to do it rain or shine, but if weather plays a part, we do have Plan B in place.
Okay, all right.
We will make sure every graduate who wants this opportunity gets this opportunity.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've had a motion to carry this forward. Are we ready for a vote? Any more discussion? Thanks for sharing that again, Dan.
A point of clarification is Tuesday, is it June 8th? Is it a Tuesday and Wednesday? Is, why am I thinking? Okay. June 8th is a Monday, I think. So you're really thinking Tuesday and Wednesday, yes?
Absolutely, Tuesday and Wednesday.
It's Tuesday and Wednesday, so it'd be Tuesday, June 9th and Wednesday.
It's supposed to be nine and 10.
Let's make sure that everybody hears that.
That's a great clarification. Right, so we're looking at the June 10th and, or June 9th and 10th. All right, any other considerations before we move on this motion? Take a vote? All right, Molly, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call vote?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
As Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Molly. Couple more things yet tonight, moving back to the agenda, we'll look at our subscription to Board Book. I'm gonna welcome Don Hoya.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member of the board. Superintendent Kelly, on May 12th, I present information on the switch from Board Book Classic to Board Book Premier. The classic will be discarded on August 31st. The cost will remain the same for the coming year. Tonight, I am seeking approval of the Board Book Premier subscription agreement for the 2020, 2021 school year.
All right, can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Second.
Got the motion from Lorian, I think, and the second from Molly?
Correct.
Okay, discussion. John?
Brian, is our password gonna change?
Yes, it will. I will be sending, I'll be sending you all that information in the next few weeks.
Brian just had an internal eye roll because he knows he's gonna get three emails from me about my password. I'm already, I'm pre-apologizing.
I can check to see if you can use your same password in the new system.
Well, I just was logging into the older one tonight thinking about this coming up and I go, I bet they're gonna get us with the new username.
But it does save your password.
The days are going.
It does save it though, so.
Yeah.
We like to keep things interesting.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Again, we talked about this a little bit more at a previous meeting. Any other discussion? All right, Molly.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
As Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. And for our last action item tonight, we have our National School Board Association membership. We did talk about this at a previous meeting and we've talked about it, previous meetings in different years as we renewed this and I believe some of the consideration, and just if you're watching, National School Board Association is the national level grouping and it supports school boards and school board members throughout the country. We use them predominantly for the national conference that Laura and I had intended to go to this year, but weren't able to because of the pandemic. But we use them to, for resources, gaining, continuing education for us as school board members. So any, can I get a motion to move this one forward?
Go move.
Thanks, John. Second?
Second.
Lorian? Thanks. Discussion. Lorian?
Yeah, just real quick, I mentioned this last time too, and I know that I've brought it up in the past as to whether or not, you know, the school, that the National School Board Association membership is something that, you know, we need to continue to pay in our budget. And I'll be the first one to admit, at a time of a pandemic when a lot of things are uncertain, having a membership to your national organization and having the tools that come with that and the learning and the education and the support through your national association is probably more important than ever. So I do support the renewal of this membership.
Yeah, very true. I can only imagine if we're able to meet next April in large groups again, what the topics will be. I'm sure it'll be fascinating, fascinating. All right, Molly.
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
As Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right, we are moving on fast and furious to board topics. Does anyone have any board topics? Sadly, we can't announce, end of the year band concerts and choir concerts and school carnivals.
I would just take a second to remind parents and our students that I think they're, I think it did start today, Brian, the collection of items and books and everything.
It did.
Check your emails, Dan, at least from the high school level, Dan sent out an email, I assume the other principals did as well, dates, times, and alphabets of the kids alphabetically, so.
Yeah, and I would add, and Brian, I don't know, you can give me a nod if I'm right here, but getting those, getting that equipment back before the start of the school year is integral to getting it ready to go again for the fall, to getting it redistributed, right? Correctly, so as much as you could, a parent might say, well, why don't I get this back next year? Well, bring it back to us, let us update it and babysit it for the summer and then give it back to you in fine working condition. Yeah?
Yes, it's always a challenge and we learned over the years that if you collect well, you can distribute well. If you don't collect well, distribution goes rough. And we wanna make sure all students start the school year with a good working device.
Great. Anything else under board topics? All right, thus I will adjourn my career-long school board meeting at nine twenty-one PM.
Nine forty-one.
Oh, sorry, is that what?